Could only be raised for services the town is already unable or unwilling to provide. There are two possible courses. One, the town council could request the creation of the borough of Rockville by passing a resolution with two-thirds support. Or, two, the request could be made through a petition signed by not less than ten percent of the electors of the municipality. The process gets more complicated from there, but I'll spare you the details tonight. In conclusion, the creation of a borough of Rockville is a radical idea that some of you may see as levying a tax upon the poorest of Vernon's citizens. That is one view. I instead think of this idea in the way I think of a parent and a teenager. Parents gradually allow a teenager to make and spend their own money, but don't give their teenager complete control over the family finances. Vernon is the parent, and allowing a borough of Rockville is allowing your teenager their summer job. The point is, Rockville deserves some say in its own destiny. It is more than a neighborhood and less than a city. It is the perfect borough candidate. I do hope you'll consider the idea I presented here. Thank you for your time. So, anybody else who would like to speak at Citizens Forum?
Yes. Good evening. Carl Schaefer, 1A Foxville Drive in Rockville. Talking on concerning the upgrade to the streetlights. Last upgrade was done roughly about twenty years ago. We went from the low-pressure sodium to the high-pressure sodium. I was a member of that committee. It consisted of, we started with Chief Urban Fritz, and went to Chief Skip Thomas, and with Mason Thrall on the committee with I. We drove around at night checking out each one of the streetlights to decide whether they were needed, upgraded, or downgraded, depending on how traffic patterns and everything changed in the town of Vernon over the years. My best recourse was we took out close to sixty streetlights and upgraded others because of traffic patterns that changed due to Vernon's circle. We did this study, which took over a year and a half for no charge. It was volunteers. No one asked anybody in this town, as I could see, to volunteer to do this project. Thus, you bid out project for nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. My biggest question is, the person who's doing this upgrade, does he live in the town of Vernon? Does he know what the traffic flow is? Does he understand things have changed in the town of Vernon? Or are you going to get a piece of boilerplate from a corporation that has done this many times before? This has totally got to be overseen by people. And this change over the last time we did it was cooperation between the traffic authority, because they were in charge of the lights, and the energy commission. I read through some of the reports on this. The biggest thing is, most of the light poles out there, the arms, and they call them mass arms, but we'll just call them arms, that connect between the pole and the light are from the sixties. They only raise maybe two feet, three feet. Some of them are straight. You're now installing LEDs, which are very bright lights. Public Service of New Hampshire, when they change them over, puts a new arm on, which raises that light up anywhere from two to eight feet into the air. Thus, this disperses the light over the large area, gives you better lighting. And this was discussed even back twenty years ago after we were doing the high-pressure sodiums, because they found out people's eyes were changing as you're going from a very lighted spot to a very low-lighted spot, and your pupils are constantly changing. If you put the new arms in, that will change that drastically. I'm hoping that the town council, the mayor, will look at this project and put it off for a while so that the people in Vernon can get involved with this and have a discussion about it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak at Citizens Forum? Seeing none. Consent agenda? Oh, wait, missed that. Presentations, sorry. Trying to get to the party already. On Saturday, December 12, 2015, I attended the annual ceremony for Reis Across America, an important ceremony taking place across the United States to remember our fallen heroes. The event was well-attended, and it is an annual ceremony, so mark your calendars for next year. Donations to assist with the effort are always welcome. Polly, thank you for helping put that together. Winterfest was a huge success, an estimated eight to nine hundred people attended. All food and items distributed were free to the participants. Thank you to Parks and Recreation for this memorial event. We had participation from the Board of Education Food Service Director, Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works Department, Administration, and hundreds of citizens and their families. Bravo to all involved. The Santa House was rededicated and opened for business on the night of the Winterfest. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be in attendance every weekend until Christmas. Stop by and welcome Mr. and Mrs. Claus to Vernon. By the way, it's free. Thank you for all the individuals responsible for this addition to Winterfest. And if you haven't seen it, it's right out here in Central Park. The Arctic Splash raised two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Send the Kid to Camp fund. The fund assists families of children who might not otherwise be able to afford summer camp here in Vernon. Sponsors donated, participants raised dollars to participate. The dollars raised will send thirty-five kids to camp this summer. The Arctic Splash event takes place at Valley Falls the first Saturday in December of the year. It was a little warmer this year, I did notice. Congratulations to Rick Durkey and our Parks and Recreation for a job well- The Children's Holiday Party. Sixty-six children participated in the holiday festival party held the first Saturday of December each year at the Vernon Teen Center. Activities included arts and crafts, holiday movies, cookie decorating, professional face painting, moon bounce, a visit from the fire department. And it looks like everybody had a great time. Amy Watt of our Parks and Recreation Department organizes this event every year, so I'd like to say a thank you to her. Reminder, everyone is invited to join me in the mayor's office at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Now, we can move on to the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Seconded by Steve. Any items to be polled? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. We're going to move pending business to the end of new business. So, we're going to move on to new business first. Steve, new business number one.
Be it resolved that the town council authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne to execute the necessary paperwork to make application for and receive local prevention council grant funds in the amount of five thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Seconded by Bill. Questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. Number two?
Your Honor, the town council hereby approves the police department to dispose or sell by competitive bidding the television, DVD player, and VCR as disclosed on the fixed asset disposal request forms.
Seconded by Bill. Questions? All those-
Polly? Chief, whoever can answer, are any of these items still working, or are they so bad that they can't be used?
That's why they're selling them. Basically, you have a-
At all, of anybody, or just not?
We, anytime we put these lists out, if anybody else has a use in the department that's free to, or in the town of Vernon, they're free to use them. Not many people wanted the VCR, so.
I'll talk to you about that after.
Go ahead, Chief. You got something, Chief?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, through you, we tried to get rid of the TV. Salvation Army didn't even want it. These cable converters, it's old analog TV. We couldn't give it away. The DVD player and the VCR are just not working.
Any other questions? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. Number three?
The town council hereby approves the disposal or sale at public auction of items from Rockville High School, vocational agricultural program, Lake Street School, and Maple Street School as disclosed on the fixed asset disposal request forms.
Seconded by Kim. Any questions? All those in favor? Number four?
Your Honor, the town council, consistent with Chapter 11, Section 5, entitled "Other Officers," hereby affirms Mayor Daniel A. Champagne's appointment of Louis A. Spadacini Esquire as town attorney.
Seconded by Laura. No? All those in favor? Unanimous. Lou, you want to come up and introduce yourself? Press the button.
Good evening, members of the council. Good evening, Your Honor. It is an honor to be considered and also to be appointed to this position. Very pleased that I got this vote of confidence here tonight, a little bit about me. I've been an attorney for eighteen years in private practice. We, our main office is in Manchester. I've sat in, well, not in your seats, but in the same capacity in the town of Manchester. Fifteen years in town government, twelve as a member, three as a member of the Board of Education, twelve as a member of the Board of Directors, which is what we call our town council in Manchester, last four being mayor of Manchester. So, I've certainly had the experience over the year of dealing with claims against the town, analyzing contracts, dealing with charter issues, rules of procedure. And in my private practice, I've handled some cases for the town of Manchester, and we've had the opportunity to represent a couple of housing authorities. At one time, we were the statewide counsel for the Secretary of Housing and Development. So, once again, I thank you for your support tonight. I really look forward to working with you in the future. And I must say, you run a very efficient meeting, so you have my-
We left the other one for last.
Thank you again.
Well, you want to come up? That way, I don't, I want to introduce you to everybody up here. Steve, go ahead and read it.
Thank you. Your Honor, the town council, consistent with Chapter 11, Section 5, entitled "Other Officers," hereby affirms Mayor Daniel A. Champagne's appointment of Martin B. Burke Esquire as assistant town attorney.
Who seconded? Polly, seconded. Any? Anybody that doesn't know Bo? Bo, use your mic. Use the microphone.
Yeah. I got a copy of an email. There's quite a controversy in the Connecticut Fire Association, whether we should be, as forty-six other states, subject to mandatory continuing education, which I've been subject to for twenty years, being admitted to two different bars. Point I'm making is that Joe Capicella, who's probably known to all of you, wrote in and said, well, he was a senior member of the Towne County Bar, and he was opposed to it in principle because he didn't want to disclose his deficiencies by going to the seminars. And the only thing I took on bridge out was that I think I'm more senior with this kind. Thank you.
Thanks, Bo. All those in favor? Unanimous. Steve?
The town council, consistent with Chapter 11, Section 5, entitled "Other Officers," hereby affirms Mayor Daniel A. Champagne's appointment of Mark K. Brance Esquire as assistant town attorney.
And I'm glad you have a mic. I'm in my third week of laryngitis, but I'm supposed to be on enough drugs now to kill whatever this is, so I hope in a few days to have my full voice back. I'm honored by your consideration. I really went to law school to serve municipalities. I have a master's in state and local government. I was a town planner and assistant town manager in Glastonbury for about six years, and during that time, there were always legal issues coming up. And although this may shock you, occasionally, a lawyer would tell me something about the law that wasn't true. And so, I decided that I was going to go to law school and learn the witchcraft for myself, and my goal was to be the kind of lawyer to municipal officials that I wanted when I was a municipal official. And that really is what I have done. I'm joined this evening by Eliza Hines from our office. All of us have a focus in municipal government. Eliza has her master's degree in urban and regional planning. My other associate, Caleb Hamill, has his bachelor's in architectural engineering. One of our partners, Ron Ochsner, has his professional engineer's license in Connecticut. And my partner served on Zoning Board of Appeals in his town and other public offices. Like Lou, I served a seven-year sentence on the Planning and Zoning Commission in my own town, as well as Library Board, Citizens Advisory Committee, redevelopment agency, there is probably some other stuff I'm forgetting. And we currently represent about twenty-four Connecticut towns, and have served maybe another dozen in the past, or as an as-needed basis. For example, when Enfield has a conflict of interest, they'll retain us to come in to handle that, and the same is true with Ellington. Their towns sort of regularly call upon us when there's a conflict. So, serving towns like this one is why our firm exists, and we are deeply honored to be here and hope that you will concede fit to appoint me and my firm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for him? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Steve, pending business?
Your Honor, after further review of the project, including the contract's paperwork, the town council affirms its December 1, 2015 approval of the CCM streetlight LED conversion and financing as presented on December 1, 2015, and December 15, 2015.
Seconded by Laura. Where's Bob? There is. Oh. Questions? Polly?
I have a problem with this for the mere fact that I left my home at eight o'clock this morning, did not get home until about five, and shortly after five, I got a call from Ann Latender, another council member, to say that we had a new contract for thirty-two pages. I have not had time between running around with grandchildren, making dinner, and getting here for the meeting at seven o'clock, in hopes to talk to a couple of my colleagues on this. I noticed on the front page, the town got it on December 11th. This is the 15th. I understand it was sent out, and then it bounced back, so being gone all day at this time of year with Christmas shopping and everything else, I have not had a chance to go through it at all. I had other questions I wanted to ask, but, and I'm not sure that they were answered in this, no one, but I haven't had sufficient time to go over it. I don't know, a lot of you other people are working. I'm retired, but I was not around all day today to, and the town has my home phone number, they have my cellphone number. We could have been contacted. I always get my packet in a hard copy, because my system is old and it doesn't always download everything. And not knowing that it was there, I might have, if I had gotten a notification we had a new contract, I could have cut some things short and gone home and read it, and then more prepared to make decisions tonight on it, and I'm not prepared to-
This isn't a contract.
Well, there's, I glanced at some of it, and there is changes in the proposal that we have been seeing, and some of the things have changed. It's not exactly the same. Is it that we had the first time we got it?
This is just the proposal, it's not the contract.
I realize that, but I still haven't had time to read the proposal.
Do you have any other questions?
Not right at the moment. I will ask some after.
Okay. Any other questions? Anne?
Just in reading through the contract portion that was attached to, that was in our packet, it isn't clear to me how the payments are going to be made. And I presume this is a fixed-price contract, so are there progress payments incorporated in here? I couldn't find any of that information. So, through you, Your Honor, to Mr. Ward.
Through you, Your Honor. You're correct, that's not detailed in the proposed contract. It would be handled as the work is done. They would submit it to administration, to Mr. Kleiman, who would vet it, make sure it was accurate in regards to the proposed charges, and then he would forward it to finance for payment. I would expect that that would occur every thirty days.
Just a follow-up question. Would you incorporate that into the contract, then, those terms and conditions? I think you need to state that.
Where is it in the contract? Bo, can you come up and join us, too?
The cost for the four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars with the contingency with the total, it's an exhibit C. So, it's modified, it's there to bill on a per fixture basis.
Bo went through this contract, too, so I'm just going to have him sit up here with us. Soon as I can find it. Okay. It's okay, Bo.
Was there a question?
I just wanted to appear in case we have any legal questions on the contract. And I'm going to have you use, Bob, can you just grab the mic for Bo? He needs it.
It's not clear to me what the basis for payment would be. And is it a progress payment? Who is it that determines when they're ready to be paid, or when the work has been accomplished, or the work scope has been done so they can be paid? And I assume this is a-
Well, I think Bob could answer that better than I. I, just for the record, I rendered an opinion on December 10th outlining my questions on the contract. I'm, been told that those have all been negotiated as we wanted it, as the town wanted it, with the vendor, so I can take them individually if you get to that, but Bob can answer the payment question.
So, in the scope of services on page two of four-
Use your mic.
Hold on. Page two of four, in B, exhibit B, scope of services, it states that the contract and party will use the installation data to provide weekly installation reports to the town. So, we're going to get a weekly summary of what they installed that we're going to verify, and they're going to be billing us based on what they installed, and then we're going to authorize the payment of it based on what they've submitted as billings.
Bill?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you. Does that mean there are no upfront costs? In other words, we're not paying for these light, lights before they're ordered, or are we paying for them after they come? What's going on with that portion of the payment?
We're going to be billed as they're installed, so we're not, we're not writing a check upfront. The payment terms are in the contract. They will bill us as they're installed.
Okay, so-
Use your mic. Use your mic.
With me tonight is Julia Allman, who is a project manager with Tanco Lighting, who has a longer ride than I do, since she came from San Francisco, California, to visit with you all. So, be gentle. She's come a long way.
We're always gentle. We're always gentle. But since she came so far, let's ask her a question or two. In the process of doing this, does each lamp, on average, give off the same amount of light as the original lamp?
There we go. I think I can work this. Yes, part of the scope of services for Phase Two, the contract that you approved last week, is a comprehensive design, so that includes looking at the audit data we collected in Phase One, and then standardizing along roadways, given traffic data, given the existing lamp wattage, and then finding LED equivalents. So, the short answer is yes. The longer answer is that we also want to take a look at optimizing, and if you have too much light or too little in one location, we don't necessarily want to match that. We want to make sure you're getting a nice even distribution of light along the roadway.
And through you, Your Honor, is the town planning on any ornamental lighting of any kinds?
Not that I'm aware of. These are Cobra Heads floodlights, high-pressure sodium lights. The ornamental lighting in front of Town Hall was done two years ago with, it's a high-efficiency fluorescent fixture, induction light, fluorescent induction lighting, and that's the only ornamental lighting that we own, to my knowledge.
So, we're not adding any- So we're not adding any ornamental lighting with this process, simply replacement? In your opinion, do we need to replace the arms that the fixtures are connected to?
The audit that Tanco did notes arms that have problems, which we'll be, you know, addressing to Eversource when we complete the transaction with Eversource. However, we do carry a contingency amount in here if we find things along the way. On the issue of the arms themselves, I'll let Julia address that issue.
Sure. So in the audit, we collected arm height, so that is one of the considerations that we use in the design when we're determining the wattage. Obviously, if a fixture is lower, you don't need quite as much light because that would just blast the pavement. If it's a little bit higher, you might want to ratchet up, so that's a consideration. As well, if you have any leaning or bending of the arm, the fixture itself does have some mechanisms inside to keep it level, so just if the arm is a little bit off, you can still get a nice distribution of light along the roadway.
So then, if I understand, you're saying you will consider that on a case-by-case basis, is that right?
Correct.
There is a cost, a potential cost associated in the contract with road guards, police road guards, which the town absorbs. Do we have any feel for where that will be used and how much it will cost?
We're going to do the majority of the traffic control through the Department of Public Works.
So that's through the Department of Public Works, even though the contract said police?
Yeah, it's their contract, it's a standard, but we do our own traffic control, just like we're doing traffic loops right now, and we're providing the traffic control for it.
And in the future, when we do maintenance, will the town do the same thing? After this contract is done, and we're maintaining these lights, may have to be replaced, whatever, is the Department of Public Works gonna provide that same service?
No, the vendor who would be doing the maintenance would be doing that. I mean, they put up flag, you know, signs, flags, cones, protect the area.
And if they need to use the police, who pays for that in the maintenance contract?
Probably the town. I'm not 100% sure. We haven't done the maintenance contract yet, so we will incorporate that into that issue.
So if it's the town, we need to have an estimate of that for future budgets, so we put the money into the budget for next year or the year after, as we maintain these things, if we're stuck with that payment. I would just like to say, the information that we've received from the last meeting has been great. I applaud the administration for providing the information that they did, and answered a lot of questions that I had, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Anyone else, Laura?
Yes, you spoke earlier about the, you'll be judging each light on their brightness and making sure that they are set to the area that they're put in place for each area.
Yes, that's correct. Is there any additional detail I can provide about that part of the scope of services?
No, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that each area will be judged and that they'll be able to be adjusted to the needs of the area.
Yes, exactly. We do a street-by-street analysis, and any recommendations that we make off of the existing wattage will be signed off by the town, so we see it as a collaborative process, and any recommendations that we make, we make sure are justified and agreed upon with the project team.
I'd also like to add, last meeting, council member, Latender, asked about color, yeah, and I misspoke and said 4,300K and it's 4,000, which is less and closer down to, and maybe if you want to talk about 4,000K.
That is more on the warmer side of the spectrum. So 4,100K is moonlight, 4,000 is a little bit warmer than that.
Anyone else? Mr. Winkler?
Yes, the motion we're considering tonight includes $912,462, and part of that is for buying streetlight fixtures from Eversource, and I guess what I'm asking is, is there a calculation in here somewhere for how much Eversource is billing us for their poles, or whatever?
They did the audit, and they told us what the price was. Do we have any of that, Bob? Yes, we do.
I can't find it in my documentation, so if somebody would point out where it is. Oh, we don't have it, he has it, is that the idea?
He has it.
Okay, okay. So my question to you then is...
Question to me, or question to Bob?
Okay, question to you. Are we paying for the depreciated or non-depreciated cost of the fixtures?
We're paying for the price that Eversource gave us, it's non-negotiable. They don't want to sell them.
I understand that, but did they charge us the same price for every fixture, and is it the purchase price?
No, they didn't charge us the same. Did they? What's that? Yeah, you can answer for me.
They charged us at the original cost, less accumulated depreciation, which they calculated on every fixture.
Thank you.
Thank you, and how many fixtures are there?
Is that through the mayor?
Yes, I started with through the mayor.
I didn't hear you say it. They say it the first time, and that's fine, I just didn't hear you say it.
Did you say 1,800?
1694.
And in this document, the Tanco Lighting document, the contract document, I believe, when it says the "contractee," or when it says the person, you know, at the town will coordinate this or that or the other thing, that's you, Mr. Kleinhans?
Didn't understand the question.
I'm just saying, when the contract refers to somebody at the town doing something like coordinating with utility companies, et cetera, et cetera, is Mr. Kleinhans the clerk of the works on this, is he the one that the contract is referring to when it says what the people who are making this contract on the town side will be doing?
Where in the contract is that? I don't think we're following what you're saying.
When it says, "Contracting party will also coordinate with the utility on changing tariffs to the newly installed..."
What page?
Page three of four. Unfortunately, I've pulled these all out.
Page three, okay.
So it's not the document with Tanco Lighting's trademark at the top.
It's the contract itself.
It says, "Task two, project completion."
You know, there's a project team on the town side for this, and it depends on what specifically you're referring to. You know, there are legal issues which may have to be answered by attorneys, there are issues that only John can sign on as town administrator, there are issues that Jim might have to answer to as the finance officer. So when they refer to the town, it's more of a project team that will be on this project, as there is on any project that we do in town.
So on this particular one, contracting party will also coordinate with the utility on changing tariffs to the newly-installed LED fixture rates, who in the team would be handling that?
That's them, they're the contracting party, not us, we're the town. Tanco is the contracting party.
Are these fixtures any less likely to put light through people's windows?
Yes, they are. High-pressure sodium light is notorious for a lot of bleed, there's not very strong lighting control. One way you can see that is just if you look at that glass lens that's on each fixture, that's just spraying light, excuse me, spraying light out in every direction. LED fixtures have much better lighting control, specifically the GE fixtures you all are looking at, they have a precision reflector and a recessed LED, so you'll get a nice sharp cutoff, getting much less light behind the fixture and more on the road, and actually more reach between fixtures.
Thank you.
You done, Mike?
Not quite. The pole itself, so somebody clips a pole and breaks the fixture, who pays for the fixture and who pays for the pole?
It depends on whether that pole is freestanding or owned by the utility, or I think you said Verizon operates your...
Eversource.
Eversource owns the...
AT&amp;T may own some of them.
Okay, so there's some ownership issues with the pole itself. If it's a freestanding pole, you all will own it through the acquisition, and it will be your asset to maintain, so if someone knocks into it, that would be an insurance claim and a maintenance claim. If it was a wood pole that also houses utility distribution lines, that would still be Eversource's responsibility to return that pole and electric service.
So if it's a freestanding pole, under the maintenance contract, would your company replace the pole, or would the town replace the pole?
We would replace the pole, it depends on what maintenance program you chose to go with in terms of whether that would be built into the maintenance program upfront, or whether it would be a time and materials issue after that.
Are we selecting one of the maintenance options A, B, and C, or are we customizing one?
We're going to select one of the pre-manufactured ones, it'll probably, as I said, it'll be more than likely in the initial period, C, so that we have the maximum coverage, and then when we have some experience on what it means to own your streetlights after three years, we'll be able to visit that again.
People have told me about crews from Pennsylvania going through town, checking out light fixtures, is that somebody from Eversource, or, I'm sorry, from Tanco?
I'm not aware of anyone from Pennsylvania, no.
When in the CCM contract, it talks about a local provider, what geographical area is considered local by Tanco?
In terms of the installation contractor, our mission is to provide local hiring, so our preference would be in Connecticut and as close here as we can. If we're not able to find a qualified vendor in Connecticut, it would probably be Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve?
Thank you, Your Honor, through you, to the table, or whoever can answer. Just for clarification for me, I want to make sure, this thing started out with a 10-week proposed installation period, now there's 17 weeks involved, and you mentioned there's four phases of the, thank you for coming from California, thank you very much. With these 17 weeks, and it says notice to proceed is when that 17 weeks will start, included in that, and the reason I'm asking this is because the back door means if it isn't all done in 17 weeks, then it goes into that default thing, and we don't want to know about that. So when this thing starts, is that when your evaluations will take place, or have you already started some of those?
Can you point me to the page in the proposal where you're seeing that timeline? Can you point me to the page in the proposal where you're seeing that timeline? Okay, so my understanding is that is the timeline for phase two, that includes, I guess you all would acquire before we have the notice to proceed, correct? And then we're probably waiting six to eight weeks just for material arrival, installation, and that also includes our final drill overballs as well, so that's commissioning, that's rebate and rate change, paperwork with the utility, and submitting a complete and final dataset to you of your street lighting system, so all those services are included in that 120 days.
Within the 17th, the last fixture is installed, to the town's satisfaction.
When we've acquired the streetlights from, and have title to them, from Eversource, we'll then give them the notice to proceed. Now, in the meantime, they've already done the audit, they're probably 80 or 90%, Joe indicated today, done with the initial engineering of the system. So, you know, it's going to be a case of, when we give them the go-ahead, they're going to order. Now, assuming that we get the fixtures in the time that they have estimated here, that's going to be the first hurdle to get the fixtures. The second hurdle will be that it doesn't rain for three weeks after that, and that's force majeure. If you can't get the material because of supply chain problems, or you can't get it, you can't do it because of circumstances beyond your control, that's extensions, but that's what the extensions would be for.
Again, through you, Your Honor. So situations beyond control, that is giving leeway to the vendor to say to you, geez, you know, we thought we could do it in eight weeks, but it's gonna take 12, and that is an automatic extension of the 17 weeks to 21?
Paragraph is common in commercial contracts. In fact, I've never seen one that the force majeure isn't in there, and there's all sorts of interpretation by case law as to what it means. It basically means events such as storms, that's a classic, like a hurricane or something, or a strike that holds up the supplier of the bulbs, things that are beyond the control of Tanco. And I don't think that that is designed or would be interpreted as you could drive a truck through it. They're a party, and the town's a party to a commercial contract, and everybody really knows what an unexpected event is, and it wouldn't be, well, it's gonna take us 12 weeks to get the bulbs, not eight. There'd have to be a reason, maybe the maker of the bulbs has a strike in his plan or something, that'd be an example, but not without articulating what it is.
The only reason I ask this, I run into this all the time with suppliers for me, and I'm just, if the, eight weeks, you had picked eight weeks, if that is the number that says we can get them all to you within that period of time, and one would assume they've probably got some of these already made, maybe even anticipation of, but they can't, reason, that the people they're buying components from to assemble these things, they can't get them from them. Is that included in enforcement? Is that included and enforced majeure?
Use your mic, Bob.
Contract is always construed as to what is a reasonable interpretation. If, I don't know, I can't think of an analogy that's ridiculous, but if they bought them on an island where there were poisonous snakes and they couldn't go on the island to get the bulbs, that might be an out for them in a delay. But if their truck broke down bringing them here, I would say that's not, they'd have to, it's a case-by-case thing.
You've got very good weather for what we normally have at this time of the year. Couple of questions. I need a definition of retrofit versus removal and replace? I guess I'm hearing both.
I think in a lot of our documents, those terms are used interchangeably. What we're referring to there is the removal of the existing high-pressure sodium head and the installation of an LED fixture. I think we use retrofit as a broad term, so if, for example, if a town was doing a decorative retrofit, we would probably leave that housing in place and actually place in an LED array. So that's a broader term, but the process is the same.
So if I understand you, you're taking everything that Eversource has on the poles now, removing them and putting new LED fixtures on all the poles?
Just the head, the arm stays in place, but the head would be replaced.
Polly, use your, Polly?
We were going to be able to use the old fixtures and you can't with the new, okay? I went on Eversource website and looked at the abandonment of light fixtures. Do we have the age of all of our lighting that is presently there? How old they are?
Yes, it was in the audit from Eversource.
From what I brought from Eversource, if the light is over 14 years old, and I can maybe assume, and I know what happens when you assume things, if they're 14 years old or older, there's no charge for premature abandonment. I don't know what our contract was or remains with Eversource, but it, I'm wondering about that 300,000 we're having for fixtures. I don't know how many of our lights are from one year or are the majority of them over 14 years old?
I think this is a different situation where they're arriving at a book value of the assets and selling the asset. It's not an abandonment, it's a sale. You want to buy it, so they're coming up with the value less depreciation, and that's what they're charging.
We can't just tell them we don't want their streetlights on there anymore and put our own up? Okay. So I understand who is going to oversee and ensure all of the assets and everything from the town will be properly handled. Is that you? Somebody, you said Jim and others will also?
The work will all be verified. I mean, Tanco is the contractor. Tanco is going to verify the work of the subcontractor that they hire to install and then we're going to verify that the work is complete. So the light's going to be on and we're, and it's going to be one of the fixtures that they've represented are being put on the pole. We're going to verify that.
Everything you hear about LED lights is saying that they're lasting 20 years. If they're going to be lasting, I'm not sure, I'll be around 20 years to check and see if they're going to be still working. Why do we need a maintenance on these and who takes care if the bulbs burn out in a year or five years? Is that GE or yours or whose responsibility to replace them?
Sure, so in terms of maintenance, with this contract, without signing a maintenance contract with us, you're getting a one-year warranty on installation labor, so anything, if anything was miswired or the workmanship was defective, we would take care of that. And you're getting a 10-year manufacturer's warranty, which would cover any fixtures that burn out in 10 years due to a defect. It's usually a driver failure is the most common thing and you'll most likely see that within the first year and then that will really tail off. You would sign a maintenance contract because currently, as it stands, Eversource is maintaining the streetlight system, so anytime there's an outage due to, say, a tree branch falling or a knockdown because it's been hit by a car or the wiring comes loose, those sort of things are already being taken care of. But once you acquire the lights, Eversource is no longer responsible for maintenance. So those are the key sort of activities that would be included in the maintenance contract.
One other question. Right now, when one of the lights, the high-pressure sodium that we have right now is getting ready to burn out, we get a lot of static through it. Is that going to be another thing that we'll get with the LED lights? Maybe not for 20 years, but is there going to be interference with them with anything within our homes or businesses because of?
No, I wouldn't expect so from the LEDs. They work with a different system. High-pressure sodium uses a ballast that actually uses a lot, most of the energy is actually used inside of the fixture in the ballast and not in the bulb. So that is a component that can cause some interference. LED uses a different technology, so you wouldn't see that.
What are we going to do with the old fixture when you're putting the new one on? Are we going to recycle that, sell them to somebody else that can use the old fixture or how's that going to work? Are we going to get that or are you?
Part of our installation scope is to coordinate for recycling and environmental disposal of the old fixtures. There's not really a good market for them just as is, so they'll be taken apart. Any recyclable materials will go into that recycling stream such as the steel housing and any copper wire. There are environmentally hazardous materials inside such as mercury and sodium and those will be environmentally disposed. So the recycling of a few components helps subsidize the environmental disposal of the other components.
Any other questions? Ryan?
First, a clarification. We're not discussing maintenance contracts tonight at all, right?
No.
Because that seems to come up a lot, but that will be a discussion in future, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, when questioning you, Mr. Kleinhans, this is really nothing different than any other contract we've dealt with, where we have a subcontractor and does work for us, probably, correct?
Correct.
So the same processes are in place to protect our citizens that you've done, whether you're paving a road or we're putting a generator in or whatever we're doing here?
Yes.
So I wanted the assurance, very good. I do, you know, nobody wants to get to the cookies more than I do, Bob. They kicked me out of the room, they knew it was going to happen, so. Yes, I will. So you mentioned that Public Works was going to do most of the flagging, directing of the traffic around it. Is in every occurrence or is the police department ever going to be used?
I'm sure there will be locations where we'll want to use an officer depending on traffic volumes, but, you know, on average in a subdivision, they're going to pretty much do their own thing, you know, and then in the higher streets, a dump truck and a light bar does certain areas and a few areas on bad corners or, you know, high-volume areas when they're doing an intersection, we may need to get a police officer for that.
So I trust your discretion in that respect. There was one thing in the contract that confused me where it said on page two of four, where it said, where was that, maybe not the contract, it mentioned red thread. So that was, I don't know if that was a prior. So was that like left in from another? It's on the page two, "Contracting party will ensure that red thread, there's not a space, and then installation contractors underline." So is that like?
That's an edit from a different region. So red thread is struck and installation contractor is replaced. Oh, I'm, well, in the edited copy I have it is. That's right, we're looking at.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions, Mr. Winkler?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, to you or whomever. A question I'm receiving is why do we need a town meeting for $220,000 for a piece of property, but we're going to buy almost $300,000 worth of fixtures without a town meeting? Could you just explain the difference?
Jim, can you take care of that for me, please?
Yeah, the town meeting is something that, what we're doing in additional appropriation to the general fund budget, that's not what's occurring here. We're going to be funding this project through a capital account and then reimbursing the cash flow that we had over a five-year period from the energy savings that we had. So that's why a town meeting is not required.
If I read it correctly, the energy payback seems to be closer to three years, or am I reading this incorrectly?
Through the mayor. That's a conservative estimate. We're looking at it from two points of view, you know, and we have to be conservative. One is if the rebate doesn't materialize, we expect, and I know Tanco is going to do everything that they can too to make sure that we get, take advantage of the maximum of the rebate. So, you know, really, the longest period of time that we see is 4.98 years. And in that savings that we have, we're also talking about also the management contract, option number C as well. So we're putting some extra dollars in there that aren't in just in the retrofit and the acquisition from Eversource.
What was that 0.98 years? What was the first number?
Through the mayor, 4.98 years. That would be the, that's where the five came from. So, and you're right, we could be as low as three, depending on, you know, we got to depend on energy savings, we got to depend on what Eversource does with their rates and then down the road here, we're going to look at certain things, how we're going to do a replacement policy at the end of 20 years. So we'll be looking at all of those three concerns to make sure that we're, you know, we're going into this, so we're going to be stable, you know, throughout. And at the end of 20 years, we're not going to say, gee, what do we need to do? We're going to be ready for that too.
Thank you.
The town council waives the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting on December 1st, 2015, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Seconded by Bill. Any changes, deletions, correct? No, all those in favor? Ananamous.
Let's eat or move to adjourn?
Seconded by Laura. All those in favor? Ananamous. Thank you, guys.
I got one good leg left.